Thank you, everyone, for attending and tuning in to the February 10, 2016, Tuckahoe Zoning Board of Appeals. What I'd like to do is stand for the pledge, and I have a little bit of information for everyone tonight on the pledge. So what's interesting about tonight is that this is President's month, and Monday is Washington's birthday. And I was able to snag a flag from a person who I affectionately call Flag Girl, which is our county legislator Sheila Markut. She's very much into flags. So the flag that we'll be saluting tonight is certified to be flown over George Washington's estate at Mount Vernon on August 29, 2015. So I would encourage everyone to think about our great general and first president, and that this flag actually flew over his estate. So if we may all start, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. And I thank you very much, and I hope everyone enjoyed that. It was, in my opinion, it's a big deal. Okay, so, first thing we want to do is have Nancy call the roll, please.
Member Ringwald.
Present.
Member Scalzo.
Present.
Member Jackman.
Present.
Chairman Gallo.
Present. We'll note the absence of our member Palladino, who's on his annual holiday in the Caribbean. Lucky for him, because it's going to be zero degrees this weekend. I'll also note that tonight's building department commentary will be supplied by Mike Semenara. Our building inspector, Bill Williams, had some surgeries, and I understand everything is going well with him, and we look forward to seeing him returning in good health. Okay, first thing we have is we have an approval of two minutes. So the minutes of October 14, we have two minor changes. You know, I'm going to ask Attorney Marin to come to the microphone just to confirm these changes with me. And these changes were reviewed at the work session with Mr. Marin and the rest of the board. It would be Nancy, on page three of five, on the top line, after the words of baked goods, the applicant would like the word goods changed to items. And then on line three, after the word supply at the beginning of the line, instead of catering companies, they'd like the words country clubs. Are you in agreement with that, Mr. Marin?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I had mentioned this at the November 4, 2015 meeting, which was the last time we were here. It's not that we wanted it, it's that's what the record should reflect.
Okay. Well, everyone was, you know, and there was no disagreement at the work session on this, so with the changes made on mine, and I will initial them, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes, the adjusted minutes of October 14, 2015, as discussed. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Obstain.
And I was abstained because you were not here, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, the next is the minutes of November 4, and, you know, that's the last time we were here, unfortunately. I hope everyone had a great holiday, and we weren't able to have our December meeting. There wasn't much coming, so everyone had a great holiday and a good New Year. And so I'm going to move the minutes of November 4, 2015, as they are written. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Obstain.
Those minutes are approved. Okay, great. What I'm going to do is I'm going to call up 10 Fisher Avenue. Mr. Les Marin, please come to the microphone. Mr. Marin, first I'd like to acknowledge, I don't know if I should do this, Gary?
You can now have the letter.
The letter from the resident?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that now. Mr. Marin, your receipt of a letter from a resident in favor of your applicant. You aware of that, and you're okay with that?
I wasn't in receipt of it.
But that the board has been receipt of it. You were aware of it, we made you aware of it in the...
Before me, yes.
Yes, okay, so, you know, what we do is we don't read the letters into the record. What we do is we receive it and hope that everyone who has commentary does have the time to come to the microphone. So that will be received and filed. And if you didn't get a copy, I don't know, we can get them a copy. All right, the next thing I want to talk about is, we have been working very hard on this application, and I am extremely proud of this board and the work effort that this board puts in. We're, you know, a volunteer board, we take it very seriously, and I could not be more proud of the efforts that we have put in. So I want to just, you know, for the record, let everyone know that I have visited the site numerous times at various times of the day to examine the surrounding area, and I know that other members have. Is anyone like to make a comment?
Well, two weeks ago, Chairman Gallo and I, about 6:00 AM, visited the site, and I live right down the block, so I've been there many times.
Anybody else?
I also have visited the site numerous times, front, back, watching traffic coming and going, speaking to the other tenants along Columbus and the other tenants that are going up Fisher Avenue. Oh, I'm sorry, I also met with the building department, I'm sorry, the DPW, head of DPW, Frank, along with Ron Gallo, on the same issue.
And I think we also met with...
Oh, David Burke.
The village manager, just to try and gain as much information as we can. Nathan?
I've had some discussions with David Burke, the DPW, also had a site visit, as well as looking through the plans and documents related to the other properties in question.
I want to thank the members for their efforts and taking out their personal time to do this, because they take everything very seriously, and, you know, this is an unusual application that we have never been faced with before on my brief time on the board, but in researching it, I've yet to come up with a situation that's in front of us right now. Mr. Marin, I think the thing that we want to talk about is our dictation from the meeting of October 14, 2015. You have a copy of that?
Your dictation?
Uh, what's it called? When it's dictated off of the, what's the word?
Was this transcript?
The transcript.
Video?
Yeah, of the video, that's the correct word.
I don't have a copy.
You don't have a copy?
Why don't you give me my copy?
Yeah, yeah, why don't you take a copy of it? I'm going to read into the record, if that's okay with counsel, both councils?
What are you going to read into the record?
I'm going to read this very brief transcript.
Could you just give us a basis for this transcript, what it was made from and where you got it?
Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, I think the record of that day speaks for itself. It's on video of October 14, 2015.
Yes.
I think it's a 45-minute mark. I think Nancy may not have copied it word for word, so I wouldn't read that into the record.
Okay.
I would rely on what the actual video says and what happened on that evening.
Well, then, for the record, then, everybody has reviewed that video to the best of my knowledge, and I agree with this transcript, to be perfectly frank with you.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Rocco Salerno, attorney for Crestwood Station Plaza Company. I have not seen that transcript, if I could have a copy.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry if we're not getting it to you. Apologize. Okay, so we're just going to receive and put that in the record, and it is very easily obtainable on the village website, and it is, at the 45-minute mark, as duly noted by our counsel. Basically, it conflicts, in my opinion, with what has been presented to us, and, you know, my recollection from advice from prior counsel in the village was that deceiving the board in any way, that in itself is, could be a reason for denial, but that's in a variance situation, so I don't know how it really works into this one, but it's something that was drilled into me by former counsel, John Cavalero. Any comments, Mr. Marin?
I frankly have no idea what you're talking about.
Okay, any comments from the board members?
If you're saying that the transcript that isn't being read or was seen, if you're saying there was something here that was deceptive, I have no idea what that is. We clearly indicated what percentages were. We clearly indicated that there was baking in Scarsdale. There's a small amount of baking that is done in Tuckahoe for items that are brought to Scarsdale, because there is an oven in Scarsdale. There are prep kitchens in Scarsdale, there are prep cabinets. Len Brandis, who's the architect on this project, was also the architect on the Scarsdale project. If you want to hear from him, you can hear from him. He did that bakery also. He put an oven in there, there's a vent that goes at the ceiling. They bake things. She has a night baker, which she has testified to. There's an indication on the record that Tal has indicated that there is a night baker there, and quite frankly, I don't understand what your point is.
Okay.
But it is what it is.
Okay, any comments from the other board members?
Do you want us to go through while we're questioning it?
Yeah.
Just so it's on the record, Les. I think what the board is having trouble reconciling is the fact that, and I'm just reading from the meeting minutes that we've just approved from October 14. Mr. Marin said that 80% of the baked items sold are to the residents in the village. Another 18% of baked goods, items, excuse me, not goods, are brought to the retail shop in Scarsdale, and 2% of their business is to supply country clubs. That is an extremely small portion of their business. I would state that the Scarsdale location, at least in seating size, is at least a third, I'm estimating, larger than the location here in Tuckahoe. The entire wall is lined with cakes, probably 100 cakes. There's, you know, a very large amount of baked good pastries, there's, I think, six, four to six baguettes. The oven in question is a warming oven, and I actually pulled up the model. It has an interior space of 18 inches wide by 21 inches tall, so less than two feet by a foot and a half. I very much doubt that a bakery of that size, in my opinion, could cook that level and that amount of baked goods for that location, even if you have a night baker for five hours. And that is just my opinion, I'm not a baker, I'm not an expert. However, based on kind of common man reasoning, I believe that it is not reasonable to assume that a very small portion of these baked goods are made within Tuckahoe.
Well, you've certainly acknowledged that you're not a baker and not an expert, which is pretty clear. I would further state that just the fact that there is a volume of space at one business doesn't necessarily mean it's busy or necessarily mean that it has more customers. I respectfully submit that for your consideration, too. We're going to stand by the numbers that have been given to you on the record and in writing, and that's basically our position.
Thank you.
Building Department, can you fill us in on the record as to what occurred, or the legal department, in Scarsdale? With the building department there?
Well, basically what happened was...
Make sure you get the microphones picking up, please.
We were requested to contact the Scarsdale Building Department for further investigating of what exactly they have at that location and what they don't have at that location. So the Tuckahoe Building Department reached out to Scarsdale. Scarsdale was kind enough to give us a copy of their approved drawing from 2011. We kind of indicated to them what the applicant had said as to what is being done at the Scarsdale location. We requested, we sent him an email, basically asking him a couple of specific questions, and he acknowledged exactly what's transpiring at Scarsdale, which is very limited cooking, if any at all. I don't have the copy of the exact email that was responded back, but basically, basically it stated that they did a site visit with the fire inspector on October 20 and the 22 at their location on Parkway. The bakery was found to be in compliance with the approved drawings from the building department. Due to the limited space, there is no cooking or baking conducted at this location. They only have a convection oven for warming and heating. That's coming from the commissioner of the Scarsdale Building Department.
And can we enter that into the record? That it's...
Good. Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have anything to comment?
If I may, Ms. Tal has already indicated, we've already indicated, you heard on the tape, she's indicated that there is baking at that location. She's indicated she has night bakers. If I may, I just want to call Len Brandis, who is the architect, who helped with the installation, did the installation there, and he can clearly tell you that the ovens bake. Some hearsay from the building inspector, who is also not a baker. They've acknowledged they don't cook there, however, they clearly do bake there, all of these small baked items. So Len, if you could just clarify that?
Good evening, Len Brandis, Brandis Architects. I was the architect of record for that space, and if you go into the basement there, you'll see that they have two big walk-in boxes, they have refrigerators, they have freezers, they have about 35 linear feet of counter space, which was prep areas, prep sinks, hand sinks, everything for a kitchen. They have everything, they do all the preparation. They're selling sandwiches, they're selling salads, they're selling everything else, which is all prepared there. The oven in question, there is another kitchen up on the first floor, it's a small kitchen area, which we did have to put full ventilation in with a large duct going up through another space, going up two stories and through the roof. And that is because that convection oven is not a warming oven, it's a convection oven, at which point it does cook five trays at a time of baked goods, and it is used all night long. Baker comes in between 12 and 1:00 in the morning, stays there till 6:00 in the morning, baking, and that is how they get all those baked goods, the pastries and all the other baked goods that are there. The cakes, which we always acknowledged, which is not the biggest part of that store, but they do have them, they have them on display. I don't think there's nearly 100, I'd say there's probably about 30 of them in reality, but, because it's all cases, that is all baked here in Tuckahoe, and that they have said.
I would like to clarify...
But sales-wise, the sales that they have is not of the cakes, it's mostly of the pastries and things like that they are doing there, because they also have a little restaurant. They don't sell as many cakes there.
I would like to clarify that within the meeting notes that we just approved, it is noted that it is only mousse cakes and a couple special cakes. There's a lot more than mousse cakes there.
They're specialty cakes, as we say.
Right. And can you confirm that the oven that you've put in this location is, and I'm not going to hold you to this exactly, but roughly a foot and a half wide, a foot and a half high and two feet deep?
Well, the oven itself actually is about like this wide, but that's the, it's a convection oven, but the interior space...
So the interior space is a foot and a half by a foot and a half by two feet, roughly?
Uh, yeah, I'd say probably, and that holds five trays for cooking, and is a convection oven, so that it cooks fast, which is why they put a convection oven in. They did not allow at that particular time to put an ancil system in, so we only were allowed to use electric appliances within that space. That has to do with the landlord, not with the building department, by the way. He did not want any flames in there. So we were limited to that, but we did still have to have ventilation, so we did have a large ventilation hood within that kitchen.
Thank you.
And that's for the baking areas.
And the ventilation is dedicated for the oven, or is it for the general baking area?
No, that's just the oven, because it does generate a lot of heat.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, before I open the public hearings, anything else you want to say?
Thank you. If I could just quickly summarize for you. Again, we are asking for an interpretation as authorized by Section 7-712B of the New York State Village law. Martine's is no different than any other local restaurants, pizzerias, pasta stores, bale shops, dry cleaners, retailers in that area. They all receive supplies by truck, they virtually all make deliveries, some of them more deliveries. Martine's does not make deliveries of individual items or retail deliveries. They all serve the local area and customers. It is a retail operation, there is not manufacturing or processing, and I remind you that those terms are not defined in your code. With respect to, it's very clear that as a bakery, it's very clear that there is food prep and drink prep there, they're not manufacturing. Nothing has changed at Martine's in years. It's the same operation. The adjoining property owner himself has been a longtime loyal customer. The only change has been that in the last round of approvals, when Bill Williams stopped in to look at some work that had been done, he suggested turning part of what's presently a garage into a lunchroom for employees. So that's what Martine's proposed to do, they submitted plans for it. They're not expanding their business, they're not getting more employees, they're not creating more volume. Bill had suggested, so they did it. After it was, the plans were submitted, Bill then rejected them, because now he decided maybe it's really not retail, so you might want to do something else, and you might have to come here. He suggested applying for variance. I said, "It's not a variance, we just need an interpretation, but they are still retail and are not changing." I would respectfully request that this board ignore the public comments, which are just basically generalized community opposition, which courts have ruled that this board is not supposed to consider anyhow. With respect to, we would respectfully request that you interpret that no site plan is required, as a site plan is not being changed. There's no external work being done, there's no structure constructed, except an interior wall, which frankly is not even structural. There's no use being established, it's the existing use, there's no use being changed. The site itself is not being changed, and there's no change in parking or parking requirements. Martine's is an integral part of the fabric of the Crestwood Station area, Tuckahoe Village and the surrounding community. We would respectfully request that this board determine and interpret that Mr. Williams' letter was incorrect, and that Martine's is a permitted use, it's a prior legal nonconforming use, it's not a special permit use, there are no variances, special permits required, and there's no site plan required, as the site is not being changed. Thank you.
I have a question, if I may?
Sure.
I need some clarification. My understanding is, I'll go back in history. Martine's moved in, right of use, first floor only. They encroached into the basement without the proper permits. They were caught. They came forward and they got the proper permits for the basement. Then they encroached into the garage space, got caught again, and this is how this came before us, and Bill Williams came. So I don't believe Bill Williams came and said, "Hey, guys, why don't you put an employee area in this garage space?" I think what happened first was Martine's encroached into the garage space, and then Bill Williams was called in because of a complaint. This is my understanding of how this transpired.
Can the building department, I'm sorry?
Yeah, but I'd like clarification first from the building department, to see if I am correct or not.
I believe Mike Semenara was present during those conversations, so I think he can weigh in on what happened.
Yeah, basically what transpired is exactly that throughout the years that Martine's has been there. They got an approval, they didn't go in front of planning or zoning, because they originally took over a bakery that was on the first floor.
Right.
Through the years that they've been there, they did take over a basement, they got illegally caught there, they paid their appropriate fines or whatever they may have done. They went in front of the planning board to legalize a basement. At the same time, they wanted to make some modifications to the first floor area as well. They got some site plan approval for that as well. And then, when we went there to do a site inspection, to basically close out the basement, upon that inspection, we found out that they further expanded the basement into the garage area that wasn't their use. The fire department has been there with us during inspections, it's very, you know, there's nothing there that nobody doesn't know about. The only thing I can say to you is that for us to legalize a space, we would require a permit, and that's exactly what they're doing now. The suggestion was, "Look, either you're going to rip all this out, or you're going to have to try to legalize the space of the expansion further into the basement that you have already expanded." So the suggestion was, submit a plan to the building department, we'll review it, and that's why we're here where we are today. That's exactly how it transpired.
Thank you.
If I may, I'm not certain if your understanding, or even Mike's understanding, of what was there when Martine's moved in, and Mr. Brandis has been involved with this owner since the beginning. I think he perhaps can explain what was there when they moved in and what's happened since, to try to clarify that for you.
The front base section of the basement area, which have an office and walk-in boxes and storage, that was always part of the bakery. The walk-in boxes are the original glass ones when you first walked down the stair, that was there when they took over the space. So half that basement was already being used by the bakery. The extension that we did go for and got approvals for, where we had to put egress stairs, we had to dig out the side, we had to put concrete stairs and walls around it for safety and everything, we did all that, and we got approvals for that, and we were moving along.
This was after you had been, after they had been caught violating...
It was, there was definitely a violation.
Thank you.
At that time, absolutely, that they had moved along, they had expanded into that basement area without getting proper permits. And we made it legal, we made it safe, we made, you know, it's a two means of egress, everything that the building department wanted. The thing that had occurred, that they had come back, is that somebody had reported to the fire department and the building department that they were cooking in the garage. And all of a sudden, it was like a raid, the building department, fire department, everybody came down, and they called me up to meet me there, because they wanted me to be a part of this, to see what's going on. We all went there, there was no cooking in there, but they had been storing goods in the garage as well.
And was that an approved use, under the prior...
It was, it's storage, it's a garage.
But it was not under the approved use?
It was not, there was no approved use for storing items or materials or, you know, things in the garage.
So it was an additional violation?
So either an additional violation, which point Bill Williams then said, "I don't have a problem, but I want a wall separating the garage area from the storage areas that you're using." He wants us to add a handicap bathroom, there was a bathroom down there from way back when it was, that was still there, so he wanted us to convert that to a handicap bathroom. And he suggested that we create a small area for the people to eat, because they had a table with a couple of guys that would eat in that garage area.
If I may, aside from the clarification regarding the walk-ins that were in previous existence, it sounds like the rest of our building department's story, sounds like it's fairly spot on, in that there were...
There were.
Two violations that were caught after they had already been committed and were rectified properly. However, they were violations and they were caught, with the exception of the walk-ins that you stated were previously in existence.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question. I know we focused on Scarsdale, and one question I don't think has been answered is you also serve country clubs. How many country clubs?
As indicated previously on the record, there are, and this letter was provided to you on November 4, there are 2% of the businesses, mini pastries that are delivered to two country clubs.
Two. And it's still two?
Correct.
Okay, and, Mr. Marin, you brought up that public comment should be ignored. I just personally, I don't get it. I've spoken to the people on Columbus Avenue and the tenants going up Fisher. Everyone, including myself, would love to see Martine's stay. They're a thriving business, it's a great thing for the neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera, and that's exactly what they say to me, with the almighty "but." And I've witnessed it, the in and out of the trucks, the deliveries, the panel truck coming and going. Where are they going? It just appears to be way more business than they used to have. And the size of the basement and the cooking area, it's huge. I can't personally, and again, I'm not an expert, I have to base this just on my opinion, my observations, that they could sell that much product out of that store alone.
The reason, it was explained to you at the last meeting, that the reason that the prep area is what you say huge, is because everything that Martine's does, they make from scratch.
Mm-hmm.
In other words, when they're making a chocolate mousse cake, they don't bring in a can or package of mousse, add water and throw it into their pastries. Everything is made from scratch with all, all from the ingredients, so they need a large prep area to do that sort of work.
But how has this changed over the years? Weren't they making them from scratch from the beginning?
It hasn't changed over the years.
Then why so much more space over time?
Because they...
It's not registering, I'm sorry. It just doesn't register that you keep adding space if they're not coming up with more and more product.
The space has nothing to do with it being a retail business.
The factory space?
It's not factory space.
The production space?
It's a retail business.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, what I'd like to do now is I'm going to make a motion to reopen the public hearing on 10 Fisher Avenue. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Anyone listening to make commentary on Martine's Bakery, 10 Fisher's, welcome to come to the microphone. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Rocco Salerno, attorney for Crestwood Station Plaza Company, which owns the premises located at 269 and 273 Columbus Avenue, which also objects to this application. I would like to open, and I'm going to be very brief, by stating, this is a complete farce. With all due respect to Les Marin, colleague of mine, who I respect for many years and has been a friend for many years, the applicant is reporting, the Scarsdale location really bothers me, that the applicant reported that it is self-subsisting, that it manufactures its own product. Yet, the building department records in Scarsdale reveal that there's no kitchen in that location. As the board itself has determined, there's an 18-inch convection microwave in that location. I've been in that location many times myself, I purchased products there, they're excellent, but there's no way that those cakes are baked in that 18-inch oven. So, the applicant's veracity is highly questionable, and I would request that the board request an independent audit of the financial documentation that the applicant has submitted, with respect to the percentages of its outgoing product, because it is clear to me, and to my client, that this is now no longer just a local bakery, that it is a victim of its own success, and it's become a manufacturing facility which just outgrew its location. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing, from the public wishing to speak?
Good evening, I'm Sandy Arno, Coco Management, 273 Columbus Avenue. I have a few photos for all of you.
And are these different from the ones that were presented at the previous meeting? Okay.
There aren't many photos there this evening. Unfortunately, the computer that I rely on has a virus, and I wasn't able to get much information. But most important, what you will see there is, on the top, there's a picture of a tractor-trailer out on Columbus Avenue. It had been double parked, and it had caused quite a bit of traffic and commotion. It had double parked in front of Chief Costanza's car, and the officers came out. But unfortunately, there was no citation. And this goes on all the time. That is the most dangerous part about the double parking, particularly in front of 273. We are the corner building. It is a blind spot. It's dangerous. It is highly, highly dangerous. And somebody someday is going to get hurt. On the rest of the pictures, what you will see, they're all dated differently, are deliveries Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Not just two days a week, but Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Deliveries go on all the time. They are large pallet deliveries.
Could I ask you just one, so I think, and I'm trying to remember our conversation previously, but I thought at the end of that conversation, that there was agreement that they were no longer at least violating the driveway area with vehicles, correct?
No, no they don't, they don't violate, no they don't, no they don't.
Okay, so they're...
No, they have honored that.
Okay, they've honored that, they're respecting your space regarding the driveway, okay.
Yes, they have.
So then we talked about the fact that deliveries were occurring, well, you know, if I play devil's advocate, a lot of these businesses in this area all kinda need these deliveries. I think the prime issue that you had was that they were getting very early, I think we saw one that was like 3:30 in the morning, correct?
They, you know what, they're all times of the day.
Is it better now, have they changed that, at least?
Their scheduling is various times of the day, I'm gonna be honest. They could be out there at 5:30 at night, they're just all day. And like I said, I can't police it anymore, I just, I have a business of my own to run. And so, I would have loved to have given you more pictures, but I just didn't have the time. They still come early. I believe they said they did stop coming at 3:30 in the morning, gratefully. Tal did acknowledge that she wasn't aware of it, and I do appreciate that that did stop.
Okay.
But they do still come at times as early as 6:00, which can still be early. But it is still a tremendous amount of traffic from Columbus Avenue, the parking, it affects the tenancy, it affects the commercial businesses. And that is my concern, how it is affecting Crestwood, how it's affecting our neighbors. This, you know, at the last meeting, Mr. Marin said that we were here today because of Coco Management, because of me. We're here today because of their violations. If I did something illegal in one of my buildings without a permit, I get shut down. My trades can't work. I have to file, if I have to go before planning, I have to go before planning, and I'm not allowed to do an ounce of work, which means I'm out of money. They violate it, but they're still operating. And that's fine, they have a business, they have to make money, but we all have to abide. And if you make this change, that means you have to make it for all of us. And do you wanna see all of our businesses down there start running at this capacity? I really don't think so, because I don't wanna see it. I have storefronts, I don't wanna see them operating like that. We're a small community, we have really nice businesses, I don't wanna see Martine's leave. I think they are a beautiful store. I think they've brought a great amount of business to our community, I think they're good business owners, but they have grown. They just need to take their factory to another spot, bring it to Fisher Avenue, stay in our community. I don't want them to leave. I just wanna protect our neighborhood, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the community that wishes to speak on this matter of 10 Fisher Seeing none, I am going to make a motion to close the public hearing on 10 Fisher Avenue. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Marin, anything you wanna say in closing?
No.
All right, also just wanna make for the record that we did ask to have our site visit at this Scarsdale location as a group, and that was denied. Okay, thank you, we'll work on that, and again, I wanna thank everyone for their efforts. This is a, you know, a real challenge, and I wanna thank the board for all the time that they did put in, because they put in quite a bit of time. Thank you. Oh yeah, we're gonna bring up, up right now. Do we have clips or something for them? They're gonna put their...
There's a bottom thing, they can just...
Yeah, I can just sit on there.
Okay.
I think you just have to move it out this way.
Yeah, if you wanna pull it out, the tripod, whatever it's called, what's that called?
We like to keep things high-tech.
So make sure the camera can get it, you might have to turn it just slightly to that side. Cameraman?
Is he okay?
Is you okay with that position?
These sides, a little more, this way. Where it's a corner.
Yeah, turn it, turn it, that's it. Yeah, why don't you just do it? Okay, thank you. Okay, state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Yes, hi, good evening, my name is Douglas Svaji, Douglas Svaji Architect, 1180 Park Avenue, Franklin Square, New York.
And the reason you're here is?
Reason we're here is, I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Anelli, the owners of 229 Alpine Place in Takahoe. There presently is an existing one-family house that we're proposing to convert to a two-family house with additions. The reason we're before the board tonight is, there was three issues that needed to get variances. One is for parking in the front yard setback, the second is for a five-foot buffer on the side yard, and the third is for the lot width. The required lot width is 80 feet for a two-family house. We presently have 75 feet, actually the lot's not changing, but the overall lot size does more than comply with the two-family requirement. The five-yard buffer on the side yard is a pre-existing situation, the existing garage does meet up to the property line on the right side of the house, so it's a pre-existing nonconforming condition. And the third issue is the front yard parking. Presently, there's an existing one-car garage with a one-car driveway in front, and what we're proposing to do is widen that driveway to meet the requirements of four parking spaces for the two families.
Okay, someone wanna step up to the plans, please?
Just clarification, sorry, clarification, you want to widen it to add two additional cars?
Correct, yeah, the existing driveway, we scaled it out, was 14 feet.
You can point to the, you're on camera, the plans are on camera, so that's good, okay, yes.
Yeah, so it's presently 14 feet wide, we're proposing 26 feet. The requirement with the village is eight foot wide per space, so we're actually two feet larger than the required.
How many cars are required on a two-family?
Four cars, two per family.
And you're, so you want a variance for one car?
No, we're actually going one in the garage and...
Oh, one's in the garage, that's right, I'm sorry, I forgot. So you got three showing on the plans, and then one in the garage?
Correct.
Okay.
We're in tandem, which would be for one family and the other.
So the variance is not a parking variance, the variance is for digging out the front yard, is that right?
So, there's four variances, actually, there's one variance for parking in the front yard, because it's not allowed in our code to park in your front yard. The other is because he said the five-foot buffer. The third was he doesn't have the 80% of the lot width, and since that, he doesn't have that, and he...
The 80 feet.
The 80 feet, he won't have that, no matter what. The fourth one is the nonconformity, because he doesn't have it.
The 80 feet is the distance to the back?
No, left to right.
Width. And so it's 75?
75 we have, it's required 80, but there is something in the code that states that, you know, for a pie-shaped lot, you're allowed to reduce by 20% along the front property line, which would bring it down in the 64-foot range, I believe. So we're all larger than the minimum required, had it been a pie-shaped lot.
And, Mike, what was the fourth one?
The fourth is the nonconformity, basically since they didn't have the lot width, you can't touch a nonconforming lot without triggering a nonconforming...
But the nonconformity doesn't have anything to do with the family, it's still a two-family zone, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's only in reference to the lot width.
And all this is...
And the buffer.
And all this is already in existence with the current property? All this is in existence already with the current property, with the exception of the front parking, the front yard parking, everything else...
The front yard parking does pre-exist also, because there is one parking space...
Right, just the expansion of the front yard parking, but as far as the lot width, as far as the buffer between the property zone and the garage, all that stuff is already existing, none of that has, that's all part of the existing property.
Correct.
Okay.
So with the, with the expansion or the widening of the driveway, if we can note for the board members, that there is no parking permitted on that side of the street, it's not like we're impacting off-street parking with the widening of the driveway. If anything, we're bringing more cars off the drive, off the street that would have to park across the street.
Can we flip the plans over to show the proposed apartment, the bedrooms?
That would be on the second floor.
Yes. That's, that's the, that's the one, yeah.
The left side of the plan is the existing house, it's a three-bedroom, one-bathroom house.
Okay.
We're proposing the second floor addition on the right side, to include two bedrooms, two baths.
See, this is my question. I own a two-family house, and I have had some experience in the building trades. My father was a builder, I spent a good part of my younger life building houses. And, jeez, if I was gonna build a second apartment, I'd wanna have a living room, or a den, a family room of some sort, and a kitchen, is there a kitchen there?
We do, on the first floor.
Oh, okay, so that's what I wasn't clear about, okay. So what's there?
Yeah, the first, if you can go back to the, unless you could point it out.
Put it on camera? Cameraman?
Thank you, the left side of the house is, again, is existing, the foyer, sitting, dining, and kitchen. We have a second entrance off the front. The living room is actually part of the existing house, part of the one family, we're adding the...
So that exists already?
Correct, but that's becoming part of the...
And then what is the one above it?
And then above that is the kitchen-dining area.
Okay, all right, that's what I wasn't clear on.
So, it's a two-bedroom apartment, bedrooms upstairs, living space on the first floor. The existing side becomes the existing three bedrooms upstairs, with small sitting, dining, and kitchen on the left.
Any questions from the members of the board? Okay, what I wanna do now is, I'm gonna open a public hearing. So I'm gonna make a motion to open a public hearing on 229 Alpine Place, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, members of the community that would like to come up and speak on this matter?
Good evening, my name is Lynda Laird, I live at 206 Alpine Place. I hesitated, because I used to live at 240 Alpine Place, so I've, I've lived in two addresses on that road. Is there an opportunity for me to ask questions, or do I just give a statement?
Well, everything has to be directed to the board, but we can request that the questions that you may ask be answered by the architects.
As I said, I moved to 240 Alpine 30 years ago, when I moved to Takahoe, and lived there in the apartment building that is 18 rental, at the time rental units, they're now co-op. Everyone who lives at 240 Alpine parks on the street, because they don't have any on-site parking. They used to be able to park kinda on Crescent, but with the building of the townhouses, they've lost that ability. So, parking is at a premium on our street. There's multiple, multifamily houses, there's a fire hydrant, thankfully, which takes up the space, and then, at the top of Alpine, you have to be able to turn around, so there can't be parking there. So parking, on-street parking is a problem. I don't know how I got diverted on that. I now live at 206, and in 2012, the piece of property next to this house was before this board for the building of a two-family house, there was an application for a two-family house. And at the time, I couldn't attend the meeting, so I wrote a letter addressing some of the issues. There was a large outcry from the, from the community, that that space was not big enough for a two-family house, that the general feel of people in both Hollywood and Alpine, including this applicant, I believe, was that it could not, our street could not support a two-family house. And so right now, there's a lovely one-family house being built there, I think they withdrew the application, and it's now gonna be a one-family, and I don't believe they needed any variances. So at the time that I wrote this letter, back in 2012, I, I prepared by getting this guidelines to applicants for the zoning board of appeals, how to apply for variances, and how to respond. And I want, and it's, it's prepared by the New York State Division of Local Government Services. Are you bound by this, or is this only towns? Do villages, are villages bound by the New York State?
Gary?
We have the village law, which I think mimics the towns, I don't know, Lynda, so it's just...
Okay.
I'm just talking about the state. The state? Oh, we're bound by the state, yeah.
Yeah, state.
The state would override the village, but...
Yeah, okay, well, it's asking that, you know, what must be proven in order to be granted an area variance, and what must be proven in order to be granted a use variance?
The five-pronged tests in the area variance...
Yes.
Yes, that's what...
Okay, so are we gonna hear the response to those five tests? That's what my question was. Like, one of them is whether the alleged difficulty is self-created.
Generally, all of them are. It depends on the view of it, in my opinion, of all the, you know, we don't have to satisfy all five of the five-pronged tests, so put it to you.
And how many, I haven't heard any of them addressed.
Well, we will address them when we respond, and give our interpretation of them, but for instance, you know, the lot width has been 75 feet, you know, for 150 years, or whatever, so that is not self-created, the lot is the lot, right? Our new zoning law requires it to be 80 feet wide, this lot exists at 70 feet wide, so 75 feet wide, so that is an easy one, that is not self-created, that just exists.
However, if you buy a home in 2012, and apply for a two, variances in 2015, because you want a two-family house, that's self-created?
Not if the lot is, not, not potentially for the lot.
It's not a use variance. This is not a use variance.
I know.
A use variance is a very, very high bar, this is not a use variance.
Okay, well, this says for area variance, one of them is whether an alleged difficulty is self-created.
Self-created...
We do consider all these, for sure, absolutely.
Self-created is something that can be worked around, in a sense that, in my opinion, and based on many of the classes that I've attended, lots of times, self-created is when someone makes an illegal pool, so to speak, and violates it, and doesn't come for proper variances, then comes back to us after being cited... and doesn't come for proper variances, then comes back to us after being cited, saying, I want these variances after I built this thing. Many times, that would be considered self-created. So again, that's a, it's a very general term. And in my opinion, and based on the classes that I've attended, it's the lowest of them all. It's the impact of the community that we really, I particularly, I don't wanna speak for the board, but I particularly am.
And so the, the part, where those cars will park, is that going to be, and maybe this is for the architect, is that going to be an impervious surface? I mean, have you addressed runoff and, like, right now, it's grass?
Yeah, I'm sure the building department will, will force them to do, you know, anything proper should we grant the variance.
That would, actually, this is, if, if they do issue any variances, they're gonna go to the planning board. So that, at that point, they'll address.
They'll address things like that.
Exactly, they'll address that, they'll address any, uh, any drainage, any site issues that they may see fit that need to be addressed in front of them.
Okay. The, the, the whole, the idea of this whole buffer, this five-foot buffer, um, I, I realize that they don't have it now, is that something, that might be for planning also, that, that could be required?
Well, that would be, if they don't wanna issue a variance on that, then they'll be required to have it now. If they issue a variance for the five-foot buffer, then they wouldn't be required to have it in front of the planning board.
But that, but that's in relation to the existing garage, correct?
No, I mean, there's still the left-hand side, which they could be required to have the buffer, there's still the back, which they could require to put the buffer in there.
Well, all of those meet the buffer test, so the problem, where they're asking for a variance is where the garage already exists on the property line. So, I mean, I guess we could.
What about next to where those cars are?
They have an existing driveway that goes right up to the property line, so that's been that way for, forever.
I, I'm not, I, I don't wanna sound like I'm definitely opposed to this, because I'm, I'm, I really just wanted to ask questions and I wanted to understand this. And I wanted to, um, finally ask how the cars back out of those parking spaces. They're not going to have the parking across the street removed, right now, there's on-street parking there. And it's very narrow. Can you put in the resolution, if this, this does pass, that, that the parking allow, the, the parking, on-street parking will remain on Alpine as it is now?
Unfortunately, we can't make that determination, the, um, uh, the police make that determination, so the chief of police is the person that.
And the on-street parking is on what side of the street?
Right, right side, as you're facing down the hill.
Down the hill?
Right.
Not on the house side or the other side?
The other side.
The other side.
But it's very narrow, and those cars could not back out of that driveway. I cannot, where I am, it's wider, and if there's a car parked across the street from my house, I have to kinda K-turn out. That's the price of doing business and living there, and I knew that when I moved there. But you're not getting a car in the garage and those three cars there and pulling out with cars from two forty Alpine Park there. You just, it's just not gonna happen.
Ms. Laird, I, I, maybe I, I didn't see it properly, I was just there the other day. And as your point, it's a little more, the street's a little bit more narrow there, and the sign said no parking, and then when it widened, it said two-hour parking. Are you sure there's parking available across the street?
The construction for the house that's being constructed, they have all those, um, they've blocked off parking because they cannot get in and out of their site.
Right.
With cars there.
The architect, do you have a photo of the existing street, um, to see if we could, I don't know if you have a zoomed-in version that shows? So it's right there, are there any cars there?
Is there where it bumps out there?
Yeah, there's no parking.
Yeah, that's what we thought when we went to visit, yeah, I don't recall parking being across the street.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so then the answer to my question, the parking will not be affected?
Sounds like it, yeah.
Okay.
And will the tree come down?
On what side? On the house side?
Okay.
Can you show the tree on the plan, sir? Mr. Architect, no, is it on the major?
It's on the, it's on the front.
Is it on the front plan? We, do we have a tree committee, what do we?
Is the tree in the front or in the back?
Do we have to get permission to cut the tree down?
No, it's good.
It's part of a development.
You know, I can't, I really, I, I'm not look good with plants. Well, I, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm a novice and I just wanted to gather information. As I said, I'm, I'm not speaking against, I got a postcard, I had already prepared these thoughts for the two-family house that was going in the space next to it. Next to me is a four-family house, next to that house is a two-family house, on the other side is a two-family house, then a two-family house, then a two-family house. We have a lot of going on in a little tiny Alpine Place. And, and I just, you know, I think that it's a lot for our street to absorb. But, you know, that's.
Those are the comments we're looking for.
Thank you. I would just point out that, um, this area is zoned for two-family residences, so not, it's not before this board as to whether they're allowed to have two families. You know, that is, but their right is.
No, I understand that, I understand that. But I, you know, on Monday, the, the village board, um, can, had a, a public hearing to consider amendments to the zoning code. And part of that was they were, they were adding this whole buffer notion to other parts of the code because it was significant to them. So it just seems to make sense to me, it, it allows for runoff because it drains better.
Right.
And, and so if there was an opportunity to somehow put more green in there, it would, it would, I, I couldn't tell by looking at the plans where, that it was right on the property line. So they're taking their steps away, I guess.
Yeah, they're making a side, an angular step or a, a, yeah. Uh, I think really, and I don't mean to interrupt you, what the board is, is facing within the, in the village is, I mean, trying to adapt houses that were built many years ago when the amount of cars in a family was much less. How do we, uh, you know, continue to maintain this multi-family zoning without having serious car problems on the streets? And living on a two-family house myself, there, you know, there are times when, especially during the snow, when neighbor versus neighbor can actually get a little nasty. And, and that's my biggest concern, so, you know, the question that the village board is looking now is the beautification of keeping a front yard versus the benefit to the community to allow some of it to be dug out, to put the cars there to relieve the parking stress, and that's a very tough call.
We, I have several neighbors here, we are not nasty to each other at all.
But I'm just saying.
That may happen someplace, it doesn't happen on Alpine Place.
You know, people just, especially with tenancy, and people who aren't the owners and tenants, sometimes you have houses that are not owner-occupied and the tenants are there, and, you know, it can get difficult.
Well, thank you, again, I'm not here in an adversarial, I'm here as, you know, to collect information and to, to better understand this and hopefully, we'll have our, if, if DPW is listening, we'll have our, our street paved now after all this construction, because it's getting bumpy over there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have one question, do you want to ask that now, or is that already done?
Okay, anybody else wanna come up to speak on two twenty-nine Alpine?
Yeah.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Um, Susan Abrams at two twelve Alpine, so I'm the one who has the four-family house on the block. It's a legal four-family, so it's all good. The parking is the issue, it's not that they, you know, I have no issues with having a multi-family house, I have one. Right now, I don't have tenants in the, in my house. If I did, there would be more cars on the block. So the problem is, I understand that what they're looking to do and take parking and put it on their property, which I appreciate, but as it is now, the way the street is, even for them to get in, get three cars there, like that even, there's no way they can do that. It just doesn't, it, you can't move it, as they go in now, sometimes their car is slanted because of how they move into it. So that's my only concern, if they could figure out a way to make it easier and make it all look nice and make the, keep the block nice, I think it's wonderful. The Zanellis are really nice people, I like them, uh, it has nothing to do with them or anything like that, it's really the parking of the block. And with the house that's being built over there, that's gonna be additional, um, um, car, I'm assuming, I don't know from that standpoint, but I just don't see the block being able to handle it, it's a small block. And during the day, there is tremendous amount of traffic in that block, for some reason, it's a dead-end block, but I guarantee you, there's cars coming up and down, a lot of them because they think it's Marlboro Dale, and it's not, and they turn around and everything. But if you bring in more cars into it, it's got, it's, there's an issue, there's a problem. And I don't see how they're gonna get three cars with that space in there, plus a car in the garage. And sure, the guy who's got the car in the garage and has to go out, where are they gonna put those other three cars to get that other car out? So that's my only concern, um, how you guys could figure all that out to make it work, great, um, but, you know, between.
Just, just, if I can cut you, just please understand what's before us is not necessarily a parking variance, if I'm correct. It is a variance to dig out dirt, to put in the proper amount of vehicles that are allowed. The, my understanding of the code is two vehicles per apartment, and they're showing us four parking if we give them the ability to dig out the dirt.
Well, digging out the dirt, just so for the record, when they dug out the dirt for that house that they built, A, it not, it rattled every house on the block, you know, and I'm sure they could even attest to it, because their house was right next to it. Their house had a rock, because I know my house rocked, and it was two spaces away. So I don't know how much they have to dig out and just more pain in the neck for all the people that live on the block for the next few months on how overlogged this is going to take. But, again, if they could figure out a way to make it all look proper, I just came because, you know, I knew they had a meeting and I wanted to hear what it was all about.
We encourage everyone to come and ask questions and, and, and understand it better.
Yeah, so I appreciate it, and thank you for your time.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, I, I understand your concern, it looks kind of narrow, navigating cars in and out of that. You have no problem with them going even further into the yard? They're proposing about twelve to fifteen feet of the front yard to be scooped out. Are you suggesting, you know, maybe go fifteen, twenty feet so that have plenty of space?
I would think they would need a little bit more space, how they figure that out and where it can go.
Yeah.
I guess that's up to the architects and the, you know, the building, uh, people, but I just don't see how they're gonna get three cars narrowly in, because it doesn't appear to be a lot of space on the plan. I'm no expert, you know, but you don't, you don't have a lot of great drivers out there a lot of times, and I just don't see it how it's gonna happen. Plus, it's a narrow, that part is narrow.
It's narrow.
So it does make a little bit of a, of a, of a problem of them turning in and out. If they need to take up more space, that's what they gotta figure out, I guess.
And the architects.
Thank you.
And the architects could probably correct me if I'm wrong, but if I remember, it's got extra, it does have some extra footage over code, so there is some extra wiggle room for them to kind of have space to turn into their spaces, I think, there's a couple extra feet, but I'm sure they've, they'll think of that, and we're, we're probably gonna look at that more, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could, uh, oh, just ask.
I just want, is anyone else, um, that would like to come up and speak on two twenty-nine Alpine Place? Yes, sir, yes, yes, yes. He can speak. Go ahead.
Hello, good evening, everyone, uh, I'm Arian, I'm the homeowner's son, uh, just wanted to explain a little bit about our family. You know, the reason why we're asking for, uh, to, to make it a two-family home is so that my parents can hopefully move into the new building, and I can stay in the existing three-family home. Twenty-nine years old.
Three-bedroom home, three-bedroom.
Three-bedroom home, yes. I'm twenty-nine years old, my sister's thirty-two, um, obviously, I'm looking to settle down soon, so those, those are the plans. And thank you very much for coming out today, um, you know, feel free to ask us any questions you have, and done, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Your parents are gonna move into the new section?
That's correct.
Why do they need two bedrooms?
Well, anyone that knows my mom knows that she loves children, so as I explained, my sister's thirty-two, uh, she'll be having children soon. I'm planning toward that, uh, it'd be nice to have an extra room so that my sister's children can stay over, uh, if they go on vacation. Now, they need some time to themselves, relatives, uh, Christmas, Thanksgiving. My mom loves children and loves entertaining.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for this applicant?
Well, after, no. Yeah, me too.
And do you want to close the public hearing first, or do you want to ask? If you want, sure.
Well, I, I do have a question about the parking. What is the feasibility, or have you thought about making it ten feet wider than it is? Because I do agree that on the plans, it looks very narrow, I find that eight-feet parking spots are very tight. And Alpine, as we know, is a, uh, steep, uh, steep hill, so during the winter, of course, it gets icy, and I think it will be hard for three cars to navigate in and out, and especially if you have one in the garage to get in and out. So, uh, the, you know, how feasible would it be to make that driveway even wider? And I know Ron said it the best, we're balancing the amount of green space versus a width of a driveway. What's better, what's worse, is debatable by different people, but have you thought about potentially making that wider?
I mean, it's a consideration, but again, I think we are concerned, we want, we want the green space. Now, the parking space required is eight feet, the car might be six to six and a half feet. So it gives you an extra two to two and a half feet right off the bat, plus the extra two feet we have, so we do have space to get cars in and out.
What's the length of the driveway from this, from the street to the, to the?
I was wondering that as well, it's not on the.
Because it doesn't look like it could accommodate a very big car.
It's about twenty-five feet.
Cause, I, that can't be, twenty-five feet?
Well, it doesn't.
No, I mean, the front parking area, because, for example, if it's to scale, you have a, a truck that's barely fitting in that first spot. What if they have three trucks, how are they gonna park with that stairway in the way?
They're twenty feet minimum to where the stairs.
Really?
I mean, the car is a representation, but cars could be fifteen, sixteen, seventeen feet. We have twenty-five feet to the existing garage right now.
Well, I mean, if, if, if a car's fifteen feet, you know, a minivan or something, um, then you really have little space. I mean, they basically got it rammed into the front stoop to, to get clearance from the, um, from these.
And, and the one thing I was gonna say is that I can see why it'd be harder to expand the driveway, because, I don't know if you can see it, that's the landing for the second home right there, so if you expanded the driveway any further, you're kind of, then you've got kind of a landing to the second home that's gonna be kind of suspended.
And we are chomping into the hill more and more, which we don't wanna disturb as, you know, we wanna disturb as little as possible. So that's why I say it meets code, the tandem situation is there two apartments, two-family house, one family would have the garage with the space in front of that garage for themselves to pull in and out. So it's one family using that lane while the other family would be using the other two.
I just find tight parking spots are very low quality of life, you know, you can get by. So the question is, if we're gonna be building something new, let's do something that makes a very high quality of life for everyone, not only for the neighbors, but for the people who are living there. And I, I think we should just consider it and, and think about it, a couple extra feet width, um, I think would improve everyone's life.
I don't think they're going for a variance on the width, building department? Do they have sufficient width?
Width?
Parking.
He just told us that he was gonna make it twenty.
Width, the width, the width, isn't there supposed to be, cause I remember giving variances.
Eight by twenty.
Eight, eight feet is what the code is. And that is eight feet each one?
Oh, we're giving twenty-six feet, so it's two extra feet.
Eight divided by three is twenty-four.
Right.
So twenty-six.
Right.
Zoning wise, we need.
The one, the one additional thing, I, maybe we should close the public hearing, I have another, is just the depth of the garage, because a lot of these old garages, you can't fit a car in.
And is there height, how, how, how high is the garage?
Well, you definitely could fit the car in the garage. Seven and a half feet.
Oh, okay.
So you can only get like a Honda Civic in there or something, or a?
Seven and a half.
Seven feet?
I'm taller than most SUVs, and I'm only six.
You can fit, they fit a minivan in, they just mentioned.
So you can fit a car in there and close the door, okay.
It's a pretty good size.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion, that if we're gonna keep going back and forth as to the parking, then maybe we oughta get some feedback from the planning board or somebody, you know, I don't wanna spend, it could cost the applicant some money, but maybe Frank Fish needs to look at the parking to say a fast preview that he thinks it's gonna work our plan.
I don't need Frank Fish.
Then, then if you want feedback from the planning board, because that's really what they look at a lot.
Where's the next planning board meeting?
They look at a lot of the parking issues, they make sure it works.
Does anybody know when the next planning board meeting is?
It would have to be on the agenda for there, this, they're on the agenda for site plan, so if you're looking for a recommendation.
This, this application's on the agenda for site plan?
For site plan, but they can't go before the planning board until they get the variances from here. So if you don't grant them the variances, they can't go before planning this month, but you can ask for a recommendation and they could look at it for the.
Supposing that the planning board wanted them to make it wider, I mean, I don't think they're gonna wanna make it wider.
You can make that suggestion to the zoning board and you can take that into, into your consideration.
But our feedback from the planning board so far is it's wide, it's too wide as it is, am I wrong?
We didn't get any preliminary, we, they didn't even look at it, they looked at it for two seconds, because they said.
Yeah, we, we went to the pre-hearing, or meeting on that last week, and they didn't wanna take it in at all until we went through zoning.
Okay.
Just, just thinking out loud, Sway, you're not here to really design, you know, I would leave the parking designs and stuff like that to the planning board, that's, that, if you don't think it's gonna work, I would get some feedback.
Either we give the variance for the, the parking and let the planning board work it out?
Yep.
Yeah, basically, that's what we're trying.
It would be a variance for the front yard.
Variance for the front yard, we can deny.
Is what they're looking for, and then the planning board can obviously look at it, and they gotta make sure it works, you know, like, they'll.
Then we've granted the variance.
Well, they'll have to look at the side, but if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, so you can't get site plan approval, so it'd be.
No, no.
We get a, I'm just saying, can we get, if we got a variance approval, and then we go to the planning board, and the planning board's. then we go to the planning board, and the planning board says, "Well, zoning approved, but we, but we want something wider," we wouldn't have to come back here.
Yeah, you would, because we're only gonna grant so many feet.
Well, here's the deal, it's a cost-benefit analysis, as we know, to grant front-yard parking. So, if there's limited benefit because it's too tight, and it's unimpractical because it's a steep driveway or a steep road, and a thin, and a thin street, then there's no benefit and a cost to the neighborhood of a loss of green space, so that's something, you know, I, I will personally consider.
But that's really what the architect's job is.
No, it's my job. I'm on the zoning board, I get to determine cost-benefit analysis. It's one of the criteria for something that doesn't mean code. And there, you know, I take into account-
But to, but-
-everything, the community.
To the fact that we discussed before, the parking's not directly across the street from this house, it's a curb line there, the area that we're widening does not affect off-street parking in any way. If anything, we're taking cars off the lot, there's no snow conditions, because nobody's gonna be shoveling out in front of this house, there's no parking in front of this house. So, we're not impacting the street at all with this-
So, member Scalzo, I mean, your only feeling is that it may need to be wider?
My feeling is it may need to be wider, and let's be honest, two-family homes always, uh, you know, always generate more traffic, of course, you know, people coming, uh, it's just an additional house, cleaning ladies, friends, relatives, they always, they always generate more traffic. Nannies, when you need 'em, you know?
As, as the Zanelli's go right now, they only have one car for both of them, so.
Fair enough, but, you know, remember, we're not making, um, these zoning determinations for a family, we're making it for a property that will move through generations and cycles.
It'll survive.
It will survive, so we're trying to not only consider the current residents, but